Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Goddington.
Here.
Mr. Kleinschmidt.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Pellegrino.
Here.
Dr. Pollak.
Present.
Mr. Schafter.
Here.
Non-members present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the way of announcements, we had an executive session previous to this for personnel issues. Any other announcements? Mr. Adams.
I'd like to congratulate the Philadelphia Eagles on their victory at the Super Bowl.
Mr. Miller.
And the William Tenet High School Panther football team will be next. They proved it can be done.
That will be probably an equal for you.
Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. Student presentations, William Tenet High School, Blake Merritts.
Dustin, we good?
Yeah.
Okay. I am not Blake Merritts, sorry. I'm Edwin Cheed. I'm the vice president of student government at William Tenet.
Okay.
Blake couldn't be here. He's at the conference that's going on right now.
If I may, before you go too much further, Ed's a modest young man and recently got some phenomenal news that I think we need to celebrate. Ed, where are we going to school next year?
I received an appointment to the United States Naval Academy.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. So, to my belief, from the last time you all met, and I was obviously not here, I would try to go my best in chronological order of the events that occurred at William Tenet High School. Starting in January 25th, there was a parents' meeting for the new schedule that will soon take place next year. And then soon after, there were grade-level meetings, starting from freshman and sophomore, junior, which will be rising seniors next year. That occurred January 30th, February 1st, and February 2nd. Then January 31st, so backtracking a little bit, the senior sweetheart skits occurred, and I was the host because Blake was a part of one of the courts. So I hosted the senior sweetheart skits, and it was the first time that they had, the candidates had a choice to either present onstage or also do a video. And the videos went very well. It was very receptive, so everything went well. February 3rd, senior sweetheart coronation crowned Molly Ellis as the class of 2018 senior sweetheart. And funny enough, Blake was a part of that court. He's always in something. And then February 3rd, which was a Saturday, the winter ball went very well. We kind of changed the location, not, obviously, it was in the cafeteria, but the setup, the stage, well, the DJ booth was a little different placing, and the students were receptive to that as well. The theme featured a nice sculpture because it was Winter Wonderland, and each student sang "The Fly Eagles Fly" and had green glow sticks, and we celebrated the Eagles going to the Super Bowl, and then, as we all know, they won the Super Bowl. February 9th, course selection fair for all students. And then February 12th, there was a course selection night for all parents. And that's the major news that happened in our school at William Tenet. And then upcoming, February 21st, there's the Black and White Night Academic Day, which occurs during the school day at 12 o'clock PM. February 22nd, at 6:15, there's a black and white pool night, and I am the captain of white synchronized swimming, so if you come, you'll see me there. February 23rd, at 6:15, black and white night gym night, which concludes the black and white festivities. March 3rd, at 7 o'clock PM, the debate host varsity finals, excuse me. And finally, March 7th, 2:30 PM, the National Business Honor Society has their induction. And that concludes my statement for William Tenet High School.
What names did the black and white pick this year?
There's White Nightmare and Black Hawks.
Hawks.
Black Hawks, yes.
But I couldn't see the white.
I didn't know if it was Black Hawks, but it's just Hawks.
I'm sorry, the white was what?
White Nightmare.
That's pretty funny.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, Ashley Passanac and Jack Ann Aisy.
Hello, my name is Ashley Passanac, and I am a junior at William Tenet and also attend Middle Bucks in the medical and health professions. For current happenings in Middle Bucks, we hosted the Skills USA District 2 competitions on January 30th and 31st. There were 400 students from eight career and technical schools in Bucks, Delaware, Montgomery Counties, competing for more than 40 skills competitions. The competitions included automotive, welding, electrical, cosmetology, early childhood education, crime scene investigation, information technology services, web design, public speaking, job interview, and technical drafting. The Skills USA District competitions provided an opportunity for students to demonstrate and master in their technical program skills. Individuals from business, industry, and education were on hand to judge the various competitions. Middle Bucks competitors participated in 32 competitions and earned a total of 32 medals, 17 gold medals, nine silver medals, and six bronze medals. Our gold medal winners will now represent District 2 at the Pennsylvania Skills USA State Competitions in April at the Hershey Lodge Convention Center. The students from William Tenet that won competitions were Ramir Chambers, he won first place in plumbing; Keith Mueller won first place in teamwork's plumbing; I, Ashley Passanac, won third place in employment application process; Alessandro Puligaria won first place in collision repair technology; Liam Stackhouse won first place in building constructions; and Olivia Swallow won second place in early childhood education. The spring semester for Bucks County Community College Partnership has begun. The courses offered in this semester is Introduction to Entrepreneurship, and there are currently 18 students enrolled in this class. Middle Bucks will be hosting middle school students from four sending districts who are interested in shadowing one of our technical programs. Visits are planned throughout January and February with 137 students already scheduled to shadow. And our cosmetology students held fundraiser on February 12th to benefit the sister of our residential construction teacher who recently lost her home in a fire. The cosmetology students opened the salon to the community in the evening and were able to raise close to $700 through this worthwhile cause. And lastly, as a reminder to students interested in attending Middle Bucks next school year, the deadline to apply for the 2018-2019 school year is March 15th. And I would like to remind the community that they can learn more about the latest happenings at Middle Bucks by liking us on Facebook or Instagram, following us on Twitter, and viewing our videos on YouTube. We look forward to reporting to you at the next school board meeting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ashley. Wait a minute, any questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Superintendent's report, Dr. Ball.
Good evening. Today I had the pleasure of attending the Pennsylvania Educational Technology Expo and Conference with Blake. Blake is everywhere. In Hershey, I was extremely proud to see Centennial students, Centennial staff, other students from other Pennsylvania districts presenting a wide array of skills to school board members, administrators, teachers, and other students. We had a great showing by Panther Boards, and it was considered one of the more innovative programs in the district. About seven different districts have requested to come and learn more about the Panther Boards project, especially the business aspects. So it's a unique and intriguing model, and of course, we have to thank Blake for it. So, anyway, late last month, we had a fantastic visit from about 25 to 30 Chinese administrators. They were extremely impressed by our partnerships, facilities, projects, staff, students. They couldn't believe how pleasant and nice our students were and happy, which was gratifying. They were also extremely impressed by Centennial X as well as the Panther Boards project. William Tenet High School, Davis Elementary, and Klinger Middle School were wonderful hosts to our guests and made us extremely proud, and I don't think we've ever made as much tea as we did that day in this district. I would also like to share a bit of good news about an alumnus of the class of 1985. Stephanie Gurish Crohoto has been elected to the Pennsylvania High School Track and Field Hall of Fame. She's already in ours. Stephanie was an outstanding jumper, whose accomplishments include two PIA titles in the long jump and in the triple jump, the first female athlete to win both PIA horizontal jump titles, Pennsylvania record in the triple jump, silver medalist in the long jump at the state indoor championship meet, gold medalist in the triple jump at the state indoor championship meet, and gold medalist in the national scholastic indoor championships. Stephanie is being recognized at an induction ceremony being held at Penn State later this month. Stephanie now lives in Rhode Island and isn't able to be here tonight, but I'd like to give a shout out to Stephanie. Congratulations on your many accomplishments. Well done. Also, as a reminder to our community, kindergarten registration is open. All students who will be five years of age on or before August 31st are eligible to enroll. Please let your neighbors and friends know, especially if their oldest child is entering kindergarten in the fall. We are eager to get them enrolled. Please visit our website for more information. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to congratulate Dolores D., our building custodian, for being the administration building's employee of the month for February through April. D does an excellent job. Her hard work and dedication are greatly appreciated. This concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions? Okay. Dr. Pollenchuck. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm quite curious to know how we got connected to this Chinese visit.
Well, that's a story. It started last year. We began exploring a partnership. We're thinking and exploring sort of global connections, global partnerships. One of the things this district really celebrates is its partnerships, and so we began exploring a number of opportunities. Last year, we had an administrator who agreed to go to China as our representative and forged some relationships with some schools there. Between the time he agreed to go and we bought his plane ticket, he took a job with a different district. So we split the cost of the trip to China with the other district. We sent 25 to 30 other Chinese administrators to that district, so they had 50 to 60 administrators in Pennsylvania, very graciously welcomed. And we're exploring the possibility of future collaboration with a number of the administrators that we're over, and it's all part of sort of our interest in being global citizens.
Thank you.
So earlier, we forged a strong partnership, a new partnership, with Santander, Spain. I think it was Salamanca. Salamanca is where, universities in Salamanca, I think. So we've opened a new relationship with Salamanca. We're trying to explore some opportunities for collaboration with China, and we're exploring those possibilities moving forward.
Might this lead to teacher exchanges as well?
It very well might. Very well might. We would like to see that. We would also like to explore the possibility of hosting Chinese students over here. They're very interested in a grade 12 English immersion experience, and so we're exploring that to see what we can do in terms of a long-term collaboration with a different, you know, with a different culture.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Pollenchuck.
This evening, we can present one of the school board recognition videos that were prepared. Unfortunately, they weren't able to work last week, so we're going to share William Tenet's school board appreciation video, and in the next two subsequent meetings, we'll share the middle schools and the elementaries.
Thank you for supporting the Student Innovation Lab. It's a big group of us that are all intrinsically motivated to make the school a better place. We've had the opportunities to go to places like UPenn and to creative labs in Philadelphia, and to see all of these people that have put real-life applications of solving problems and actually making money from it, and we're doing that to make our school a better place. And it's a really exciting thing for us to be a part of, so thank you.
Thank you, school board, for funding our art department.
Thank you, school board, for funding my digital production to class and for giving me opportunities to better myself and for also giving me guidance in the classroom.
I like the Chromebooks because they help me stay organized and I have easy access to all of my assignments.
I really enjoy having it in class. It adds a very positive element to the learning experience.
Thank you for funding our music programs here at William Tenet.
Thank you for the support of our athletic programs.
Teachers and students love the furniture in the breakout area, so we want to thank you for designated funds for that to happen.
Thank you, school board, for helping fund our robotics program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Centennial School Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Acio.
Tell them we said thank you.
And you're welcome. Okay, community comments. I don't have any green cards. Is there anybody out there in the community that'd like to say something? Okay, seeing none. Consent agenda, Mr. Schafter.
5.1 minutes. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves a minutes from January 9th, 2018 work session, regular school board meeting, minutes from the January 23rd, 2018 committee of the whole meeting.
Do you want to do them all?
Okay. If there's no objection, I'll go right on.
If anybody wants to pull anything, we can let them.
Okay, I'm gonna go right on through 5.12 then. Yeah. 5.2 Personnel. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves resignations, retirements, terminations, leaves of absence, authorization to employ, change of status, reading Olympics coordinator 2017-18, K-12 library coordinator 2017-18, K-12 counselor coordinator 2017-18, substitute nurses, substitute health room assistants 2017-18, substitute bus drivers 2017-18, Panther Board student trainees, employees executives 2017-18, co-curricular additions and deletions 2017-18, award of tenure. 5.4 Appointments. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves Siv Avantuni, Region 2, appointments to Citizens Policy Committee, three-year term. Siv Avantuni, Region 2, Beth Bloom, Region 2, Krista DePiero, Region 2, Katie Dreeben, Region 1, Kristen Ishinger, Region 3, Lawrence Lee, Region 1, Jason Mattis, Region 3, Michael Pruszniewski, Region 3, Dorothy Sokolowski, Region 1. Waivers. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves facility use waivers, approves of facility use requests to waive building rental fees for the Montgomery County Workforce Investment Board for the use of William Tenet High School for a community event titled Manifest 2018 on Saturday, March 10th, 2018. Reduction of fees, $7,272. Approves retroactively a facility use request for a 50% reduction of fees for Southampton Basketball to use the Klinger Middle School Gym on Sundays from January 28th, 2018 through March 18th, 2018. Reduction of fees is $960. Approves a facility use request to waive all fees from Wormminster Symphony Orchestra for the world-famous clarinetist Julian Bliss to present a masterclass on Saturday, March 10th, 2018, at William Tenet High School. Reduction of fees is $238. Conferences and travel. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the attendance of William Tenet...
I wanted to pull something in that section.
Which one?
I just want to ask a question. 5.6? 5.6H, I think it is?
Okay, we'll hold off on that one then. Okay.
Approves the attendance of William Tenet High School debate student qualifier to participate in the 2018 Pennsylvania High School Speech League State Championship in Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania, March 15th through 17th, 2018. District costs not to exceed $1,161. Approves the attendance of two William Tenet High School students to participate in the PMEA Region 6 Band Festival in Springford, Pennsylvania, February 2 to 24, 2018. District costs not to exceed $320. Approves a trip by 31 William Tenet High School students and four chaperones to participate in the 2018 Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference in Hershey, Pennsylvania, April 9th through April 11th, 2018. District costs not to exceed $17,524. Approves the attendance of two William Tenet High School students to participate in the 2018 Region 6 Concert Choir Festival at Central Bucks South, March 1st through 3rd, 2018. District costs not to exceed $451. Approves the revision to the request for the Davis Elementary School principal to attend the 2018 National Principals Conference in Chicago, Illinois, July 10th through July 13th, 2018. Total cost not to exceed $1,700. Approves an overnight trip for two William Tenet High School teachers to attend the 2018 Social and Emotional Learning Conference in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, May 9th through 10th, 2018. District costs not to exceed $819.52. Approves an overnight trip for a William Tenet High School teacher to attend the National Council on Education for the Ceramic Arts Conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, March 14th through March 17th, 2018. District costs not to exceed $1,601.16. Approves an overnight trip for a principal, teacher, and board member to visi...
No, that's a woman.
I'm sorry. Approves an overnight trip for a supervisor of curriculum and instruction and a McDonald teacher to present at the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators Research and Development Symposium, March 18th through 19th, 2018, in State College, Pennsylvania. District costs not to exceed $707. 5.8 Assemblies, speakers, and programs. Approves an assembly at McDonald Elementary School, "Winter All Around You," on March 15th, 2018. Cost of the assembly is funded by the Centennial Educational Foundation grant. Approves a series of assemblies at McDonald Elementary School, Asia and informational writing, beginning February 21st, 2018. Cost of the assemblies is funded by a CEF grant. Contracts, licenses, and services. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves change order number three for Oxford Engineering for the construction of a new fueling station at the Transportation Center. District costs not to exceed $10,630.10. Approves the request to release final payment to Oxford Engineering for the new fueling station at the Transportation Center. Inclusive of all contract items, retainers, and change orders, 1 through 3, district costs not to exceed $53,021, inclusive of the amount in 5.9A. Approves the request of Bowery, Isit, and Associates to provide construction, inspection, and observation services for oversight and design compliance to the various structural wall repairs at Klinger and Law College Middle Schools. District costs not to exceed $25,600. Okay. Let me have yours, it won't separate. 5.9 Approves the amendment to the Record Keeping Services Agreement between the Teachers' Insurance and Annuity Association of America and Centennial School District reflecting adjustments to the available investment options as recommended by the district's independent advisor, Henderson Brothers, and the CSD/CEA 403B Joint Labor Management Committee. The district's designated trustee is directed to take such action, execute such forms as are necessary to effectuate the change. Approves a three-year agreement for the purchase of Navex Global, a confidential internet and telephone-based reporting tool to give district employees, students, and community members an anonymous and confidential way to address misconduct in the workplace or classroom setting due to mismanagement of funds, fraud, and/or violations of law or policy. Cost to the district for year one is $3,050, and $3,000 for years two and three. Second.
Can somebody second? Second by Mr. Adams. Any discussion?
When I vote, I will be abstaining from 5.1B, minutes from the January 23rd, 2018 committee of the whole meeting, as I was not in attendance at that meeting.
I will too, for the same reason. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 9-0, except for 5.1B, which is 7-0-2. Okay? Now we need to go back to 5.6H. Mr. Schafter.
Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves an overnight trip for principal, teacher, and board member to visit Bridgeport Elementary School in Toalatin, Oregon, to observe the school's two-way immersion program. District costs not to exceed $2,500.
Second. Second by Mr. Kleinschmidt. Yes, Ms. Brancato.
So my question is, my question is, why does a school board member need to go? I'm all for the principal going, I'm all for the teacher going, but why do we need a school board member to go? It's a fairly new program, and I think that the principal and the teacher are more than qualified to bring us back that information. I don't know why one of the school board members needs to go.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, my comment's more of a general nature than specific to this, although I do have a specific comment. We as school board members are responsible for approving major changes to the district. An opportunity similar to this, or this opportunity in particular, will be groundbreaking for school districts in Pennsylvania. We have many students who have English as their second language. We don't have an immersion program. It might be that if, you know, we're lucky as a school board to have a teacher on the school board who teaches Spanish. I mean, I can't think of anybody better to be going. The cost is nominal. I mean, it's not like they're staying at the Ritz-Carlton. They are staying in Toalatin's best hotel, the Comfort Inn. You know, I just don't understand the continued objection to school board members getting professional training and bringing back information that will help this board make a decision on whether or not we should approve a program or implement something that can ultimately reduce costs in the district in the way we teach a language to somebody who is not, who does not have English as their native language.
Mr. Dixon.
If you wanted to respond...
If you wanted to respond, I'll concede.
Mr. Miller.
It's not the program that, I'm not objecting to the program at all. And it's nothing personal, so I don't want you to feel that way. I just don't, I think that Mr. Ortiz is an awesome principal. I think that he'll bring back all the information. I don't understand the need for a third person. And I am allowed to question.
Absolutely.
I am allowed to question, and I am allowed to question why. So, yes, it is a nominal fee, but every time, not every time, I should not say that. Several times now, there's been a nominal fee for a school board member to go. I do know that in the past, school board members have not gone to conferences so far away, and I think Mr. Ortiz will do a fine job of bringing back the information.
We have a budget established every year for school board members to attend conferences, and they have. And they will continue to do that. And we've had this discussion before about putting the agenda out in advance so that when there is a question of this nature, you have an opportunity to have it resolved before the meeting.
But what would it, I don't understand why.
There's two parts here.
Listen, there was a running email that was not very nice. I thought it was sneaky. We didn't need to do that. You notice I didn't chime in because I'm an adult. Okay, so, if I have a question, I have a right to ask it at a public, in a public forum. I'm not being mean. I am not being mean at all. And Tara, I really hope you don't think that, because I think you're an awesome person. I just don't see the need. I also know that, sir, you know, $833 here and $833 there, all adds up, and that money could be going towards the kids.
There is a study-
Mr. Dixon.
I just wanted to clarify, I, the email chain that was referred to, I started that. I was not attempting to be sneaky, I just asked a question. I hope no one, I'm sorry if it was taken that way, I wasn't trying to do anything, but I thought that would be public enough for the board, just to discuss an agenda item. That's all.
Two things.
And I wasn't trying to be mean either.
Number one, the email that you sent and the answer to it went to every school board member. So, everybody got the same information. Secondly, the school board member who would be going is giving up a day of work somewhere else, whether that's a personal day or whatever, in order to go. And board members do this on a regular basis, give up time and donate other time besides the board meetings to do things, attend conferences, et cetera. So, that should be applauded, not questioned.
Dr. Pollak, I'm not questioning whether the program, and I'm certainly not questioning Tara, and if she's willing to take off a day, that's awfully nice of her. I'm questioning, is this going away far, traveling far? Is that something new? Because I don't think it was standard practice before.
There have been board members going a number of places.
From my, my understanding-
Throughout the 10 years I've been on the board.
The first one in a very long time, or in the history of the board in many years, was the one that was approved for you not long ago. And I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just saying, we have a lot of children here that the money could be spent. Instead of on, on, on school board members, traveling and spending $833, I know it may not seem like a lot, but have you seen the need? These kids, there's, there's other things that money could be spent on.
Okay. Tara.
Um, I'm, I mean, I am perfectly fine not going.
Did you hit the?
Yeah, it's on, I'm just not good at this. I am okay not going. This, for me, happens to be a very personal issue. We do have a high, I mean, what is it, 14%, 17% of our students are natives, 14% of our students are native Spanish speakers. We have an ESL program that works for them, but it doesn't, it doesn't do enough to help them achieve the way that they need to achieve. We also have a significant population of kids that would be super interested in learning Spanish as well. Because right now, I see it, we have a group of children who, their understanding of the universe is kind of put on a lower level than the rest of the kids in the district. This is an opportunity to give them a space where they can shine, and that they can be the experts. I don't know that I have to go as a board member, but I do know that our job is to set district initiatives and to set the kind of agenda towards the direction where we want to be headed. So, I do want to be a part of that. If the $830 is, and we have that money and we need to spend it on something else, like, by all means, by all means. And, you know, to that end, I am taking two personal days from work, and my son is going to be at home with my mom, who's also not going to be working, so that I can go. So, there is that, that trade-off there. I'm more than happy to not go, although I do think that having, you know, a degree in education and then another degree in bilingual education, that this is an opportunity for me to, to also, you know, learn something and then really bring that back to the group. And I don't know whether, or Dr. Ortiz, if he has a degree in bilingual education, if he does, then that's fantastic, but doing bilingual education doesn't just mean we throw Spanish speakers and English speakers in the same room and hope it works. It's really, you have to be meticulously planned, or the program will fail. So, I do want to be a part of that decision-making. It could be that we go there and I say, I don't know if this is the direction we want to head, you know, and, and I feel like that's a valid thing that I could add to the conversation. But again, I don't, if, I am not at all about taking money away from our kids. If we have that money earmarked for something else, then please, I don't, I don't have to go.
Mr. Miller.
There's three parts to this. Number one, on a purely economic basis, if we were to ask Dr. Whitaker or Mr. Burdenek what the cost is to the district for remediation to students who get to the secondary schools without a proper foundation in English, it would probably be incalculable, or for Mr. Burdenek, close to incalculable. Number two, there was a report done a few years back called the Iowa White House Study, and that particular study proves beyond a shadow of a doubt that an active and involved school board member leads to a better-functioning school district. And I'll be happy to make a copy of that available to everybody on the board, because we shouldn't be having this conversation on a regular basis. And third, to Dr. Pollak's point, we have been doing this for a long time, and school board members give up an inordinate amount of time to do things like this. We had a, it took us nine years before we could finally get full-day kindergarten, and while it wasn't out in Oregon, it was not too, too far from that when we spent three days in State College taking a course just to put us in line for some possible funding to have full-day kindergarten. It, you know, it's just, this is something that school board members do, everywhere across the state, everywhere across the country. Last year, I, you said, Dr. Pollak set a precedent by being approved to go to San Antonio. Last year, I went to Denver with Dr. Ball, Ms. Coles, and Mr. O'Connor, and we presented a program that is being done in our district on distributed leadership. This is how school boards help each other, this is how school boards learn, and this is a function of a properly-operated school board.
Mr. Adams.
Yes, so, every one of nine school board members has the right to speak, and just as every other one has the right to speak after they've heard that, it's everybody's right, they're all elected to this board. There's no question about that. But when you say that money is not being spent on students, everything we approve is being spent on students. If we spend money, if the majority of this board votes to spend money on anything, it's all for the students, just because it wasn't a book. If we think it's beneficial to send somebody, it's going to benefit the student, then it benefits the student. We're not taking money from the student, we're just finding a different way, of many ways, to allocate money to benefit each student. It is not taking money away from a student. You know, last time, we talked about the NSBA. By its own definition, it's the National School Board Association, and we were questioning why we were sending school board members to that. It's not the administrators, administration, it's the school board. That's why all school board members from the country, from the national NSBA, go to it. It's a, it's a national assembly of school board members. We don't find out about things like Centennial X and brainstorm, one of our most fantastic things, unless we go to these meetings and brainstorm. Every dollar this board votes on is for the student.
Mr. Shafter.
Ms. Brancato, you know, you are entitled, your opinion, and you've expressed it, and I've heard everybody else, and Tara, I hope that if the board votes for you to go, that you still will go, and give up your two days and have your mother take care of your son. But I've heard this over the years, I've been in education for 40 years now, how there are individuals who believe that if money isn't being spent directly, on direct classroom instruction, it's not benefiting to students, that it doesn't need to be spent on administrators, because that's just overhead, we don't need them, it doesn't need to be spent on, on professional development for school board members, and, and it's just not the case. And it's the same, I've heard the same arguments over and over, over the years, and I, and I'm sure I'll continue to hear them over the next two years while I'm on the board here. So, I think if you agree, Mr. Pollak, if nobody else wishes to speak, we can call the question.
Okay. We have a call of the question that takes precedent over everything else. All those in favor of calling the question, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Question is called 8-1. And again, this is on 5.6H. Roll call vote.
Mr. Kleinschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Pellegrino.
Yes.
Mr. Shafter.
Yes.
Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Brancato.
No.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Goddingson.
Yes.
Dr. Pollak.
Yes.
8-1.
Motion passes 8-1. Okay, new business, six. Mr. Shafter.
Are we going to vote on the three as a whole?
No, do each one separately.
6.1, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the preliminary 2018-19 budget of $119,922, and authorizes advertisement and submission of Act 1, exceptions for the increase in special education expenses as per the attached.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Adams. Any discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are there any other exceptions that we are entitled to that are not included in this?
No.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'll add something to that. Just to say what we say year after year, meeting after meeting, this is procedure, this is not finalizing the final budget, this is procedure to make sure we have everything open, every option open to the end. Thank you.
Is it on this?
Yes.
Okay, give me your green card, and you can go to the microphone, and you give name and address, and you have two minutes. Okay?
My name is Terri Sprango.
Please speak into the microphone.
My name is Terri Sprango, my address is 1051 Valley Road. My question is really on the budget, and especially addressing her questions around 5.9H. In all honesty, the root cause issue that I see here is really, how do we, how do you allocate your labor workforce to handle your new necessary functions that you are acquiring in your district? You have more ESL people. What qualifications do the teachers or anybody else have in this district to be able to handle that, instead of going to spend additional costs to go do other trainings, to bring those ideas and principles back, and then you still have to staff accordingly? I'm from a world of manufacturing, I'm an accountant, controller in my level as well, just like Mr. Burdenek. These are all the same questions that I face on a daily basis with my ever-changing workforce in my corporations that I work for, and I do their accounting for as well, is that how do we align specifically the labor force that we currently have, or the labor force that we need, with where we need to go into the future? I mean, this is where you guys are kind of spinning your wheels, and I kind of want to know an answer on your direction with that, of how do you prepare this labor staff in this district for the growing, ever-changing needs in this education that we need, in this world that we face, especially computer literacy, getting these kids ready for the digital environment? I mean, the Excel that you guys are teaching right now is way, way behind. I mean, I'm on formulation, calculations myself in Excel, and I've taught that, that's all self-taught at this point. So, I mean, there's so much changing in the global environment that you guys are readying these kids for, and how are you guys changing your own labor staff to reflect the ever-growing change that it really needs to be involved here? Because that's the biggest function of your cost driver on your budget. When you're spending 65% to 70%, and I've read over your audited financials, on labor costs, you need to align your labor costs with the future now. So, my question is, is how do you decide to labor, to align this labor cost with the future, especially over now spending additional costs for a board member to go learn about ESL when this has been an ever-growing, changing environment in our current educational program structure in our district? Anybody?
I guess the, the most immediate examples I would give you of realignment of resources would be the efforts that the district's undertaking to realign the high school schedule to an eight-period block schedule, which then has a, there's a corresponding realignment at the middle school schedule. Those are the two, I think, the two big, high-profile, plus a change in the-
But is your staffing needs that you have for that realignment currently ready to make a really effective difference, and in an efficient manner too as well, on the cost drivers of this labor of your, the ever, I mean, let's face it, pension benef, pension contributions on the employer match right now are 35%. They have an expectation in 2020 to be at 40%. On a median income, the median income level for every person in your district as a constituent here is about $62,000 annually, right? But your teacher annual salaries are about $96,000. That's a major, that's a $30,000, 30-plus, $36,000 differential. And how do you make it up with just continuing to raise taxes on the people that really can't afford it in the district when the salaries are, the labor costs in this district are very astronomical? I'm just asking a realistic. I deal with this all the time in my own business in manufacturing, because our labor costs are such a heavy embedded portion of my bottom line every day for a poor-profit business model without guaranteed taxpayer money. I don't have any guarantees on my revenue stream, I have to go earn it. You guys have guarantee, because your guarantee is you can just raise our taxes right now, and we continue to have to contribute, or people take our property. So, we're stuck in a catch-22 as the constituents of this district.
So, if I may wade in, thank you, Dr. Pollak. You've raised a number of really, really important and salient questions, which I'd love to sit down, and in fact, we have a public school budgeting meeting scheduled for two weeks from last night, if I'm not mistaken. You're asking really huge questions, and one thing that I think it's really important for the record to capture is, and Mr. Burdenek will set me straight, in the last five years, the amount that we have increased our expenditures is less than 1% over what we can control. What was that exact figure?
Cost labor is one of those things that are so variable and so astronomically out of control, and I know this from the manufacturing side for 20 years of Fortune 500 corporations, that if you don't control and mitigate it and get in front of it, block and tackle it immediately, and make sure everything is aligned, it will continue to engulf your financials, and it will continue to just eat away and erode at that cash balance.
So, again, you're asking fantastic questions, but I want to point out that this district is third from the bottom in terms of median taxation on the residents.
I know, which is really good for house valuations, especially with the salt tax changes now that the government is-
Excuse me, if I could finish, I'd greatly appreciate that. You were given your two minutes, I'd like a couple minutes in return. Thank you. We are also at the median for expenditures on our per-student expenditure, so we are not, and that includes the cost of labor. So, we are right in the middle for the county, and we are towards the bottom of county taxation. So, that's really important to keep in mind. Mr. Burdenek, who was here before and then has come back, has been instrumental in instituting cost controls over what we have been able to impact. Your original question about what we're- Your original question about what we're doing for the workforce is systematic, ongoing professional development under the direction of the Office of Teaching and Learning.
But that's at the cost of the taxpayer again, right?
Excuse me. Again, it's part of the investment in a currently changing economy.
That's my question though, is that the cost of the taxpayer though? Is that at the cost of the taxpayer as well? Because when I'm looking over the things that we just approved, that's at the cost of the taxpayer. I'm not trying to be rude, but these are the really concerns that has another member of your staff here, of your board members have admitted to, yes. And the exponential components of this stuff, when you continue to add it up, it continues to erode away at other allocations. So that's what I'm really concerned.
One of the biggest cost drivers we have no control over. Federal regulations require us to do things and we're not getting the money from the federal government for it. The state regulations require us to do things. Of all the taxes that we raised in the last five years, about seventy percent of that goes to pensions, which we have no control over.
And I understand that, fully, I do. So like, I do it in my job. I can't point fingers, I've got to solve the problem.
Plus all the other regulations that the state puts on us that we have no control over, that we have to deal with. That's driving the cost of education up.
I fully understand that, as those things are also governing in my regular world too. But I don't have the opportunity in a for-business profit model to say, well, this is the fault of this person, this is the fault of this person, this is the fault of this person. Because I have a lot of employees that are riding on my back that rely on those positions and those jobs and incomes. So I've got to solve the issue.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this? Okay. We're voting on six-one. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine-nothing. Six-two.
Be it resolved that Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the Buckle County Intermediate Union Number Twenty-two, 2018-19 Programs and Services and Instructional Materials and Research Services Budget for the fiscal year July one, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2019 in the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, reflecting an increase of two point nine-three percent from the prior year. Centennial share is forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars, thirty-three cents as per the attached.
Second. Second by Mr. Miller. Any questions? Any discussion?
I just wanted to announce I will abstain from this point.
Yes, because of work.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight-zero-one. Six point three.
Be it resolved that Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the Act One referendum notice advertisement as per the attached.
Second.
Second by Mr. Adams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine-nothing. Policies, Ms. Pellegrino.
The following policies are presented for initial distribution and discussion. Policy, or seven point one A, policy one-two-six, class size. Seven point one B, policy two-oh-two, eligibility of non-resident students. Seven point one C, policy two-three-nine, foreign exchange students. Seven point one D, policy seven-oh-one, facilities planning. Seven point one E, policy seven-oh-two, gifts and donations. Seven point one F, policy seven-one-nine, unmanned aircraft systems or drones. Should I keep, should I keep going to the doctor's?
No, let's do any discussion now of these.
Okay.
And if you have something later on, please make sure you get it to Dr. Pollencheck or Ms. Pellegrino before we have the final adoption. So any discussion of anything? Mr. Schafter?
Yes, you'll find I'm a regular person when it comes to policies. So I read through this. In fact, I even asked to have a copy of it early. And I do have some questions and some comments. I like the class sizes you're talking about, first of all. But I think we need to make these as goals, not as absolutes. But before I go into that discussion, I think we have a technical mistake unless, I don't think it's really what you meant to say. And it's for grades two and three. The new policy defers, in the old policy, twenty-eight to thirty-two is one teacher and one aide. And then thirty-three to fifty-four was two teachers, fifty-five to eighty-one was three teachers. And if we, and if we do, the way it's written now, you're actually below your maximum of twenty-seven in when you have these multiple sections. I think what should happen is it should say twenty-eight to fifty-four, two teachers, then continue down the line.
Yes. Hit my button here. We'd revise that to include that the class sizes, no one section would be above twenty-seven. So we'll revise it to reflect that, as you said.
Oh, so this is going to be revised?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we pulled the aide out, the additional aide. That's the part that was pulled from the original policy.
Right, you pulled the aide out. Another section, when you pulled the aide out, you changed the, it just didn't do it on this one. Okay, so I'm not telling you anything new. Okay, so that's something I saw. Another thing that I'd like to discuss, first, I would really like to have it as a may and not a shall for when we have these, and may instead of will, because I think it should be something that's a judgment call at the beginning of each year, depending on how many of these occur, whether the budget can support it. And I have another question. This is a question now. So on page two or three, after the eighth day prior to the Teacher in Service Day of the elementary enrollment in a grade level at a school exceeds the class-size guideline by one additional student per section, then you add a section. So my question is, has to do with the number of sections because it can depend on the number of sections, the difference can be greater or smaller. For example, if you have five sections of a grade that exceed, I'm looking at grade one as the example. So if you have five sections of twenty-six, you would automatically make it six sections of twenty-one. But if you had three sections of twenty-six, it would be four sections of nineteen. And nineteen is really on the small side. And the hiring additional teacher for one student doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me.
What we're attempting to capture in here is as we're approaching the beginning of the school year, it's also difficult to start up a classroom and hire staff in proper time and have the classrooms and the materials and everything set up. So what we're going to do, instead of automatically adding a section, we're going to take a look at how many additional other sections we may need in that grade. And if we need to add an over-enrollment aide, we would do that. If we need to split a section, always considering what the needs of the students might be. If we have a array of students that are English language learners, students with IEPs that need additional support, then we would take a look at splitting those sections. But if those conditions aren't there, we may add the aide. So it's reserved for us to make a judgment based on the needs of the students and how many other sections we would be adding that close.
I didn't mean this, basically agreeing with what I'm saying is that teachers may be assigned based on, she really shouldn't say will be assigned.
Okay.
And I think that should be a change on page one and on page two, where you have at the thirty-fifth day, that in that paragraph, an additional section will be added. But what you just told me was that sometimes it may be an aide. So that's why I'm saying change it to may. And then the very last page, page three, decreases in enrollment after the first student day shall not result in a loss of a teacher for that grade level. So now you've, you have the, you've raised it down because you have five sections with one extra student. So now that one extra student doesn't show up, so now we have this extra teacher that we really never needed. So now you're saying you're not going to reduce that teacher.
So procedurally, we confirm that those students are attending school. And we also control withdrawals in central offices opposed to the building levels so that we're certain that the number of students that are registered are in fact the students who will be attending school. If three weeks into the school year, as an example, someone moves out or something changes, we wouldn't collapse a classroom in order to then furlough that teacher?
No, and one other question. Does it make sense, just educationally, I know it makes sense fiscally, but does it make sense educationally that if, let's say, in the month of, in the September, you realize you need another fourth-grade teacher in a different school and you have one less teacher, you really don't need the teacher in school A? Would you consider collapsing the class and moving that teacher to the other school rather than hiring another teacher?
Those machinations happen over the summer. One of the things that we do when we have our June first building assignments and they're presented to the teachers, we take a look at and look at what sections might be close. And there are sometimes internal involuntary transfers that happen because a school might have more teachers assigned to it than there are actual sections that occurs. Unfortunately, once the school year starts, if, let's say, we don't need that particular, let's say, fourth-grade class at Davis is an example, that may not necessarily be the teacher that would be released because it would be the least senior teacher. So it could be disruptive to multiple classrooms across multiple schools.
Something to think about for contracts down the road. Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
I have a question. Dr. Pollack?
I'll take his first.
Is Karen taking the questions or are you?
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, answer, she speaks.
Yeah, Dr. Pollack, Pollencheck touched on what I was going to bring up. And, you know, I don't know how to incorporate it in policy. And in practice, we have to leave it absolutely in the hands of administration who deal with this while it's in motion. I like to think of it more in terms of demand than class size. So in other words, it's possible to have a class of twenty-five students, none of whom have an IEP and none of whom have a second language. Or it's possible to have a class of twenty-five that is very heavily weighted with demand on the teacher. In some cases, technology can help ease some of these things. Some cases it can't. So as we look at this over the next month, till it comes back to the board, if we can look at some language that gives some latitude to administration to think in terms of the demand on the teacher rather than the size of, the number of students that the teacher has in the class.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I don't, as Dr. Ball just said, we need some sort of a formula to be able to calculate that. But, you know, it's been this way since eighteen forty-nine. Maybe it's time we look at different models.
I'll yield and then I just have a procedural question, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Michelle McAllister, two thirty-two, Sari Road. My point, I just want to make a point on what Mr. Schafter was saying about having that one additional student and having to add a whole class. When my eighth-grade student was in fifth grade at Willadale, she had an enjoyable year because they actually ended up having to add a teacher right at the last minute in August. They went from six classes to seven classes. She ended up with, I believe it was twenty-four students in her class. The teachers were all able to manage their students. The IEPs that they had were down because they were all spread out throughout the six student, or the seven teachers. Last year, when my sixth grader was in fifth grade, I believe they were two students away from adding an additional class when it got to August. And it was a horrendous year. The whole sixth, or fifth grade was out of control, basically. I mean, I was at Willadale almost every day, really the entire time my kids were there. And the difference in the, just the whole atmosphere of the grade level there was significantly different when the teachers had much, you know, fewer kids to deal with. And, you know, they shared it basically with, you know, between seven teachers as opposed to jamming into the six of them. And so, you know, one student, yeah, you're saying, you know, it's only one student. But that one student really is a hundred and seventy students, you know, that you're trying to manage, you know? So I see you have the policies, but you really need to keep the classroom sizes down, especially at the elementary level, you know, below twenty-five as much as you can. Because once you get over that, I'm speaking as a former teacher also. I had a classroom where I had twenty-nine kids one year. And it was much easier the years that I had under twenty-five, where you can just deal with each kid, those four or five kids. It changes your whole day, your whole, your whole year experience. So you really have to, yes, it's one student, but it's not one student. It's a hundred and seventy students that you're affecting. So that's it.
Mr. Adams?
So of course, we're working within a collective bargaining agreement when we set these. That's another thing we have to think of, obviously, right? We can't just go to a certain number. We have to work with whatever our collective bargaining agreement is, correct?
Class size is not in the collective bargaining agreement.
So there's no limit in the collective bargaining agreement whatsoever?
Well, high school does. Secondary has a number, no teacher can teach or assess or plan for more than a hundred and fifty students a day. So it is captured there, but in terms of how that divides out in each of the classes.
So there was a lot of leeway in this, in this policy.
Not for elementary.
Thank you.
I actually have something to say on this as well, if that's okay. And I wrote mine down because I'm not good at thinking fast. So, well, sometimes I am. So I like to.
You very much are.
I like to think about things when we have evidence and peer-reviewed studies. It's how I like to make all of my decisions. But in this case, there really is a paucity of peer-reviewed studies that treat and like correlate class size to student achievement. And this lack of research has been really convenient for school districts. I don't just mean ours, but school districts across the state and across the country because it allows them to maintain a status quo, which is increasing class sizes. Without empirical evidence to suggest otherwise, school districts are absolved of the responsibility to face a fact that all practicing teachers know, class size matters. It really, really does. And without proper evidence to base our policies, we really do have to rely on the testimonies of stakeholders and the uniqueness of our district and in order to make informed decisions about the policies and the administrative regulations that guide class size. So to that end, I do have to preempt the rest of what I'm going to say by saying that it makes me uncomfortable to talk about myself, but I do have to do that for this to be, for this argument to be clear. So at the beginning of my career as an educator, I taught for the School District of Philadelphia. When I was transferred to Bartram in southwest Philly, I was assigned two eleventh-grade sections of English. When my principal learned that it was my first time teaching English, she assigned me to one class of behavioral support students and another of exited or final-year ESL students. Her rationale was really clear and overt. She said, we need a certain amount of students to score basic or proficient on the PSSA or we wouldn't get our funding. And she couldn't afford to give the best students to a first-year teacher. So she gave me the kids that she kind of knew probably wouldn't pass. I mean, that was, that's the reality of the situation there. So I'm proud to say that of the students in my behavioral support class, all but two scored basic on the PSSA. And of my ESL kids, three scored basic and the rest scored proficient. I now teach an entirely different course to an entirely different population in Downingtown. And we have, it's a whole nother ballgame. My current students are enrolled in a highly rigorous and highly prestigious international baccalaureate program that demands critical thinking and language fluency from everybody. And I'm also proud to say that I have a hundred percent pass rate every single year on that exam. So I tell you this not to like really tout my resume or toot my own horn, but to provide you some empirical evidence to suggest that I'm a, I'm a good teacher. Not my ratings. My ratings are good too, but that's all nonsense. So the, the school that I currently teach is a magnet school and our kids choose to come there. So by default, they're all highly motivated, they're all engaged, they're all concerned about their grades and their performance in class. The really only behavior, like, issue that I deal with is silliness. There are no fights, there are no drugs, there's no disrespectful language, nothing. Yet even in this ideal situation, as a highly effective teacher, I have trouble with high class sizes. I have trouble with them for two reasons. The first one relates to the concept of teacher-with-it-ness. It's a term that we use to describe a teacher's presence in the room and her ability to manage the classroom without taking away from instructional time. So with a packed classroom, it's difficult to move around the room. It's difficult to ensure all the kids can see the board. And it's difficult to make sure everybody's on task all the time. Just because, I mean, adults can't even do this. When you've got quiet, captive. When you've got quiet captive audiences, it's hard to keep people engaged. And the bigger reason that I think it's important to think about class size is because as we're moving to provide more rigorous and student-centered instruction, for example, things like project-based learning requires that the teacher conduct multiple formative assessments to ensure that students are on the right track. This means having conferences with the kids. If you have a class size of thirty, that can take weeks. The other thing with, if we're teaching kids about metacognition, that requires an individual check-in, so that I know what the kid is thinking, how they're thinking about their thinking, and that makes me have to really give them an individualized education plan, even if they don't have one. That takes a lot of time. The other thing is, if we want to teach kids to be good writers, we have to make them write. As a high school teacher, when I get a set of essays, I have a hundred and twenty-four kids on my roster. The CBI says I only get a hundred and fifty, so I'm very lucky that I don't max my CBI. But I spend fifteen minutes on each essay, that's twenty-four hours. That's twenty-four hours that it takes me to grade a set of essays. And I do it with fidelity, because I'm obsessive-compulsive, and I wouldn't be able to sleep at night if I didn't know I was doing right by my kids. But without holding teachers accountable, other teachers don't do that, because they don't have to. Why would you want to do that? Why would you want to bring that on yourself? So if we want to talk about pushing our direction, or our school district in a direction where we're making kids engage in rigorous study and rigorous, you know, coursework, then we need to, as Mr. Miller said, think about the demand that that puts on the teacher as well. I do think, as a mom, that twenty-nine kids in a fourth and fifth-grade classroom, I don't, I don't want my son in a class that big. I really don't. And if we talk about having to think about, okay, well, we've got this many ESL, we've got this many special needs, we have these many kids with IEPs, when you max it out, and then you're not going to hire another teacher until there's one over, that means you don't have that wiggle room anymore. That means there has to be, the sections all are full before you even think about it. So how are you going to be, how are you going to do that? I think that we are going in a great direction. So I don't mean to, you know, this isn't meant as an attack or anything, but it is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I want to make sure that we're thinking about that, especially at the elementary school level, because as they get older, they need, they need that individual time, the teacher. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pellegrino. And I'll just second what you said. I've taught writing for years at Temple University, and my class at Rowan University is not a writing class, but that's for real. I mean, when you have twenty, twenty-five kids, you're asking them to write four, five-page papers, and the, the design of the class is to get them to learn how to write correctly. It takes time to grade it, it takes time to read it, you need to meet with them individually. Students, I mean, writing is not something that just occurs to you. It's a craft, you learn it, but you learn it through practice and then somebody individually guiding you, and class size really matters. And we're talking about writing, but I think that a lot of that transfers to, I mean, I spent a lot of time in the school district of Philadelphia in my day job, and they keep their first-grade classrooms to fifteen students for, to a large extent. And I think there's a very good reason for that, so.
Again, this is initial distribution. It will come up again next month, or I guess, yeah, later this month or next month. So if you have anything else, please make sure it goes to the proper people, any problems or discussion or questions. Okay. Policies for adoption, Ms. Pellegrino.
Okay. Policies, these are the policies being presented for adoption. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approve 7.2A, Policy 006, meetings; 7.2B, Policy 204.1, family trips scheduled during the school year.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't notice it before, but when I was reading Policy 006, again, in Section thirteen, we used to have some language regarding making DVD copies available to Anne's Choice. Has that changed that we don't need to any longer, or was that part of policy or administrative regulation? The reason being that Anne's Choice does not get the cable network, they're on satellite, and we were making our meetings available to them. It only crossed my mind because a policy came up here. I don't know if we've stopped doing that.
They have not been made available for a while.
Okay. Is there still any interest there, or? I don't know that has to be part of the policy. I just.
I mean, I think if there were an interest, we'd be happy to share it. No one has made any requests for as long as I've been here, and.
That tells you what our meetings were like before you got here.
I've heard they were noteworthy.
Maybe we should have the administration check out.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do that.
Okay. Anything else on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes nine, zero. Financials. Mr. Schafter?
Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria fund, budget report, general fund, cash receipt summary for January 2018, and approves the fund profiles, treasuries report, January 2018, as per the attached. Eight point two, approves.
We're going to do them all, I'm sorry.
Approves the 2018 budget transfers for February as per the attached. Eight point three, approves the pending bills list as per the attached.
Second.
Second by Mr. Adams. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, nothing. Board discussion and comment. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up at this point?
Did I mention the Eagles?
What?
I think I already mentioned the Eagles, didn't I?
Yeah. Okay. Reports. District policy report. Ms. Pellegrino.
The Citizens Policy Committee wasn't able to meet the last time on February seventh because of the weather, so our next meeting is going to be March seventh, I think. I can't remember right off the top.
The seventh, yep.
Yep, March seventh. That's 6:00 PM, right here in the admin building.
Okay. And the Bucks County Intermediate Unit 22?
Our meeting is coming up, so I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. PSBA representative, Mr. Dixon.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Miller on this one, mostly because I did not get on the conference call this month. I need to do that, so, unless you have something, because I know you're, nope? In which case, nothing to report currently.
Okay. Legislative council liaison, Mr. Miller.
Well, I'll respond to Mr. Dixon first. As PSBA representative, you were supposed to remind us that with four new board members, we should once again review the principles of good governance, policy of PSBA, and vote on it as a board. If it hasn't been sent to you this early, I can.
It has not, but.
All right, I'll provide a copy to administration.
It was in the new, the magazine that they had.
Right. And it, so they're asking all, all boards where there was a turnover to, once again, look at that, because the current board members should sign and adopt.
We should put that on agenda very shortly.
Very good. On the legislative side, the big elephant in the room is still SB two. Our General Assembly is off for the next month, but when they return, you can be sure that this is going to be hot on their plate. For those of you who follow the issue rather than the number, this was the bill that would provide approximately $500 million of funds that are currently provided for public education to be made available and diverted to private schools in form of education savings accounts, which are nothing short of vouchers. Our district is on record with Harrisburg. PSBA is currently trying to get a critical mass of districts. Soon as there are a hundred, and we're close, soon as there are a hundred resolutions from across the state, they will present them en masse to the General Assembly. Other items, we did just have our advocacy, our National Advocacy Week in Washington. Dr. Ball, Ms. Coles, Ms. Antonelli, and Mr. O'Connor were there for an equity session beforehand. I think there's some good things that came back to the district. I was lucky to speak with some of our legislators with regard to IDEA, where I think some groundwork was, was made when the act is just the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The federal government was supposed to provide forty percent of the cost. We're currently receiving roughly eighteen percent under the next rendition of that. We're going to get cut to fifteen percent. So this is one of the unfunded mandates that Dr. Pollak was talking about. President has announced that he's going to try to pull back 5.2% from the federal budget in terms of how much money is distributed by the government. Again, on the subject of unfunded mandates, I, you know, we get a lot of direction for a little bit of money from the federal government. To me, it's kind of like having a border in your house, telling you what to watch on TV and what to keep in your refrigerator. Lastly, we also had a good conversation across the board, especially with both senators in terms of the Perkins Act, which provides funding for technical education. We're not asking for an increase. All we're asking for is, please, not a decrease, and they were responsive to that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, Mr. Kleinschmidt.
Thank you, Dr. Pollak. Our student presenter did an excellent job bringing us up to date. I only have two additional items to cover. There was an outstanding presentation made by the Skills USA officers about their fall assembly, when they went and got the breakup of the teams, and they learned how to be leaders, and they all came back and made individual presentations. They spoke very well. And the other item was, our January meeting was canceled because of weather, and in our February meeting, we had a reorganization, which we do every year, of the executive council officers, and I'm very proud and pleased to announce that Mr. Miller has been elected vice chairman for Middle Bucks Institute of Technology for this current year. Congratulations.
That's mostly because Mr. Goddickson wouldn't take it.
Communications. I don't have any other communications. Anybody have anything else? Seeing none. Any additional community comments? Schedule of board meetings and calendar of events, Mr. Adams.
Okay. On Friday, February sixteenth, there's an early dismissal, elementary conferences, secondary, professional development. Monday, February nineteenth, all schools' offices close for President's Day. Tuesday, February twentieth, at seven o'clock, the BCIU board meeting at the BCIU. The next Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock, the Centennial School Board meets for a committee of the whole meeting here in the boardroom. Wednesday, March seventh, 6:00 PM, Citizens Policy Committee at the Dot Henry Multipurpose Room, which I'm told is in this building. I imagine it's one of the other rooms somewhere.
I think it's over that way.
Okay. And Monday, February twelfth, at 5:30, the MBIT Executive Council meets at the MBIT. And Tuesday, March thirteenth, at 7:00 PM, there is a regularly scheduled Centennial School Board meeting here in the boardroom. Thank you.
Do I have anything else for the good of the cause? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Adams, second by Mr. Miller. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.